Good morning, brother. Good morning. What has we all stand is we bow for a worthy prayer. Kind Father, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for life. We thank you for health and strength. We're so grateful for this community that we live in called University Park. Father, we're so grateful for how you have kept this community and how you have sustained this community. Father, we're thankful for all of our elected officials. God, we pray special blessings to be upon them now. We thankful for our mayor. We pray for him, God, that you would strengthen him and keep him. We pray for all of our trustees and everyone who serves this community. We thankful for all our awesome volunteers who work to make it happen day by day. God, we continue to ask your blessings to be upon our community. God, we pray that you will shower us with your favor and your blessings. You come against the powers of darkness, God, and we pray for that your light will shine every day through every neighborhood, through every street corner, God. We pray that your peace will be with us. And now, God, we pray that you will bless this town hall meeting, that you'll allow it to be effective, you allow it to be fruitful, that something good will come out of this. God, now we put University Park in your hands, the safest place for it to be, and we ask your blessing to be upon it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Good morning, and thank you all for coming. This is our first town hall meeting under my administration, and we plan to host something like this twice a year, once in the fall and once in the spring. The purpose of this meeting is to provide you with information you need about what your village government is doing for you. In addition, it is an opportunity for residents to ask questions and get answers from department heads and those who are on the front line providing services to the residents every day. You may notice many of us are wearing pink or some version of it. This is to recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Nearly everyone knows someone who has been affected by this horrible disease. According to the Office of Disease Prevention and Health Promotion, breast cancer is one of the most common kinds of cancer in women and men, and one in eight women born today in the United States will be breast cancer at some point, also including men. But women now have a higher chance of survival if the cancer is found early and treated. A mammogram, a screening test for breast cancer can help find breast cancer early when it's easier to treat. So please spread the word and encourage your loved ones and friends to get tested. You should all have received an agenda and an index card on your way in. We created the agenda to help you follow along and learn who your village officials and staff members are. The index card is for anyone wanting to ask a question. Please write your name and question on the card. We will collect all the cards. With the help of these young volunteers, we will go through the cards, remove any repetitive questions, and then answer the questions one by one. We want to go get through as many cards as we can, and we believe in this matter, everyone will have a chance to hear the questions and the answers. The staff is prepared to answer questions as well, and we hope with their presentations, we can answer some of them ahead of time. Before I get into my formal remarks, I want to recognize some of your elected officials, the village department heads, and any other dignitaries that came here this morning. I'd like to start off by introducing the trustee Shirley Bowden. Shirley?
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for coming out in this chilly morning. I'm trustee Shirley Bowden. I am trustee liaison to the Economic Development Department. One of my main projects right now is working with Pine Lake. And I appreciate you all coming out. If you have any further questions, we can talk during the question and answer session. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Our next trustee that I'd like to introduce is trustee Theo Diopoulos-Brooks.
Three minutes. Two for you, two for me. Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everyone here. I'm kind of like going up and up because Richie's, we beat Central last night. So I'm a little happy, but I'm tired because I got a game on Monday too for our JV. But I would like to thank everyone for coming out. Just like my colleague here say, if there's any more questions, we can definitely deal with it further along the line as I pretty much handle the public safety of the village, and I hope I'm doing a great job. Thank you.
Yes, you are. Thank you, Theo. Our next trustee is Donzel. Most of you guys know him as Coach Tutu Franklin.
Good morning. Thank you all for coming out. I truly appreciate you taking the time to come out on your Saturday morning. I think this is extremely important. Hopefully, as we continue with this process, that this room will fill up so we can get more community members involved and have a clear understanding of what's going on in the community and being able to ask questions about what's going on in the community. So I thank you all for taking your time out, for coming out. Trustee Franklin, I'm excited about things to come forth. I'm a new trustee, but I'm extremely excited and prayerful about this community. I think that we're headed in the right direction, but I acknowledge that there's a lot of work to be done. So I'm excited about being a part of that work, and I'm a person that loves challenges, so I'm definitely up for the challenge. Anything that, any questions that you have, I'll be excited to answer the questions, and I'm excited to announce that I'm going to be the liaison to the Education Advisory Committee. I've been in the education administration for about 14 years now, and I'm extremely excited about working with the superintendent on things and services and interventions that we can provide for the youth of University Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Coach. The next trustee would be Sonia Jenkins-Bell.
Good morning. My voice is a little hoarse, I have a cold. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out today, and I appreciate you guys next and next spring. I'm quite sure it'll be standing room only, but thank you so much. Also, I have been chosen to be the liaison for the youth, co-chair was Coach Tutu, and the senior committee, and I thank you guys, and if you have any further questions, please reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee. The next trustee I'll be introducing is Curtis McMuller, the second trustee.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate everyone here. Good morning, I'm the senior trustee. This is the end of my, end of my first term, but I'm glad to see so many pretty faces this morning, this Saturday. I haven't graced this auditorium since my last job right away from here, so wonderful things are happening. Now, thank you for coming. I appreciate you. And once again, Curtis McMuller, trustee, University Park. Oh, oh, I'm the liaison for the cable station. And then, okay.
Thank you, Curtis. My next and last trustee that I'll be introducing is trustee Elizabeth Williams.
Good morning, everybody. My name is trustee Elizabeth Williams, and I have been out here since the early, early seventies. And when I came here, we had gas stations, we had the car wash, we had some, what was it, wine in, we had, we had a lot of things. We had a big building with insurance companies inside, real estates inside, all of these things, we were building up. Now I see everything that's going down. I got back on this board because I want to help bring it back up to par. We were grown, and I want to get it together to be grown again. We got I-57, we got people coming through. We need business this year, and this is what we should do. So I'm here to try to do that. And I am the liaison, the leader to the mine, and also going to be the liaison, special events, and code enforcement, and the golf course. We hope to build it back up the way it used to be, so everybody can enjoy it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, trustee. The next person I'll introduce, we all know her, is Mama Dee, which is our village clerk, Madam clerk is the veteran of the team, years of municipal master clerk experience.
Good morning. Come on, wake up, everybody. We've got work to do as a, most of you know. He calls me Mama Dee, but I'm the matriarch of this board and mostly for this community. As a matter of fact, my daughter was the, was in the first class, she was a freshman, when this school was built. So I go back to the early seventies, want to say this, I am your clerk, all of your, I'm your clerk, and I'm here to serve you. As, as a clerk who's been around for quite a while, remember, I am the keeper of the record. With that goes a lot of responsibility for making sure that you have access to what is, not what is dormant. Feel free to contact me in my office, but before I sit down, I could not do what I do without the support of a dedicated, artful deputy clerk, Giselia Kelly. And feel free to contact me at any time. My phone number, seven oh eight four seven three six two zero one. And remember, we can all make a difference. It's up to us what difference we make.
Thank you very much, Madam clerk. And the last person I'll introduce before I introduce my, our special guest is our treasurer, Mr. Jim Ellis. Mr. Ellis, come on up and introduce yourself for a second. I know you don't like these microphones.
I am Jim Ellis, treasurer, and I'm just, was appointed here to help a minister and help guidelines and going forward and to put the village in a new projects and anything we do. So that's it. I'm also with the Coast Guard, you know, we have examiner votes and our controls on Lake Michigan, so I'm kind of.
Man down water.
Right, man down water, and that kind of likes me, I can try to run a sound, but I try to squeeze in, to really, to get it out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before I go on to our village manager, I'd like to introduce our state representative, which I consider a good friend of ours and a friend of our community, Mr. Anthony DeLuca, Representative DeLuca.
Good morning, everyone. And I do want to say thank you for always making me feel so welcome here at University Park. I really do appreciate it. Even when people aren't too happy to see me, they still are pretty easy on me. But I appreciate that, and you know, what happened earlier this year with the water issue, and I wish I was able to wave a magic wand and fix that problem right away, but that's just something that's going to take time. But I've worked very closely, my offices work very closely with the administration and the IEPA and the US EPA and Otwood, trying to do all we can from our perspective from my office. But with that being said, I am your partner. I am University Park's partner, so you can count on me to assist in any way that I can. That's already happened a number of times, but I'm hoping in this capital bill, I'm going to try to get a chunk of money for the village to use on some of your projects as well, and I'm in communication with the mayor on that. So compliments to the mayor and the administration, the trustees for doing this, the people at University Park. I know it's a little cold this morning, but this is a great opportunity, wonderful opportunity to stay involved and be informed, so I give you a lot of credit for doing this, and good luck with everything. And my local office is in Chicago Heights, always feel free to contact me.
Thank you. Always can call that guy, that guy always answers that telephone. Thank you, Anthony, again. Now, I'd like to introduce our new village manager, which many of you guys have not had the opportunity to meet, and her name is Ernestine Beck Fulcom. Ms. Ernestine?
I don't know if this is the point that I'm going to make remarks or just to say hello. So at this point, I want to thank this community for opening their arms and inviting me in. I got off the plane and started to run, and I've not stopped running since. There's a lot to be done in this community, and staff has been very helpful, trying to review and look at what we're doing with regards to the industrial development in this town. We're looking not only for industrial development, this town clearly needs commercial and retail development, and that's going to be a priority of me. In addition, I'm looking at, Mayor, now I'm making my comments now, that way I don't have to come back up. We're also looking at, let me just break two things. This is a food desert, this town is, and if you, we don't know that it is by now, we should know, especially when you have to spend your dollars for food outside of this community. But we want to change that, and we're working on something now that is truly going to change that, and we look forward to that. Also, I just want to tell you that another concern when you're dealing with development in towns, looking at vacancies and blight, and whether you recognize it or not, this town has its share of vacancies, and there are blight, there's blight in this community. So we have an intern that I'm working with, effective as of yesterday, his name is Ricardo Ruiz, he was all, there he is, sitting in the back, Ricardo, the guy with that yellow shirt. He's from Governor State, by the way, Governor State University, so, and Governor State, as you know, is in town. But anyway, very quickly, we're doing that. He's developing, we're getting all the, doing an amendment to the, all the property the village owns. When you sit in front of folk and wanting them to assist you, you have to have some answers. Somebody coming in, you need to say, these are the locations of the pieces of parcels that the village own. Well, we're going to amend a project map that we have because those have changed, so we're going to have a map of all the vacant properties, the PIN numbers, the legal descriptions, all of that, and we're going to create our own land bank. We're going, in addition, we're going to utilize the vacant properties, those that are not necessarily owned by the village, to look at possibilities of possible eminent domain down the line if necessary, or deal with code enforcements with property upkeep. We've not been utilizing a process called priority liens, and we intend to do that for those people that are not keeping up their properties, and the village places liens on their properties. Good county, well county, as what you call property liens, where we're able to go in because of the amounts of monies and the continued violations and the non-responder and payment. So we're using everything under to, to help you, this community. In addition, I just want to say the final thing, and I'll just sit down, is one of the things that I find out is this, this community is probably one of the better communities with the amenities. I've worked in my employment history, I've worked over 50 years in it, and I can tell you one thing, that this community has all of these tips. I've never known a community seven tips. It just blew my mind, and I've been TIF administrators in prior municipalities, but this community has all of the right kinds of bait, and what I was looking at in terms of TIF communities, it also lacks what we call a preferential hiring provision. You have all these provisions in these tips that says you must hire two, three, four, five, whatever, 500 people, and if you don't, you got to pay us 10 cents. I got something better. It's called preferential hiring, and I've used it before in other areas, and it works all the way. That means everybody in town that's in a union, they always holler, we only require or hire union folk, everybody in town that has a union card, or remember, 134, electrical, whatever the case may be, masonry, is going to have an opportunity to come, sign up at the village, complete an application, allow us to get a copy of your union card, and we're going to put it in what we call a preferential hire list. And then when these developers come to you and say, we don't know, we looked, we couldn't find, now y'all know how they find excuses, right? Well, we're going to say, when they come, we're going to say, bam, here it is, now you got something. Let us know how you're working on it. But we're going to do it through this newsletter. Sorry, ma'am, I'm going to sit down. This newsletter that's coming out every quarter, so this newsletter is going to be key to you all getting a bulk of the information. Even though we have our website and all, you know, we all don't use websites, and we all don't Facebook, I come in the back door. I do not go to Facebook because I don't want people to know my name. Anyway, anyway, so anyway, like I was very quickly saying is, and I'm going to stop right after this, that we have to be able to get the townspeople in and get them some jobs, you all. Everybody's not trained in everything. We want to know what you can do, so where the opportunity comes in, then fine, or if you're trainable, okay? So we're going to do this, we're going to try to pull all this to work. This has been one of the mayor's charges, and it's my charge, I guess, and the board's charge to look at what we can do to maximize and use what we've got. Thank you all.
Thank you. I say a little long-winded, huh? Next, I'd like to introduce our department heads. Our acting chief of police, Mrs. Deborah Wilson. Longtime member of our department.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to. I'm Deborah Wilson, and I'm the acting chief of police for the village of University Park, and I'm very proud to do that, okay? Also, I'm proud to be a part of the people that I work with, great group of people, professional, highly professional, and any way that I can be of service, please let me know. Thank you.
Next person will be our fire chief. And right now, it's time of the season, everybody knows about the space heaters and all the things, and the smoke alarm and carbon dioxide. Here's our fire chief, Brian Chelios.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. My name is Brian Chelios, fire chief for the village. In my 20th year now with this village as an employee, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. I've learned a lot, I've met a lot of great people, and I've seen a lot of things happen in this town. So the fire department has currently two facilities. One is where village hall is, the other's in the industrial park. I have a combined staff between fire and code of about 20 employees with a full fleet of ambulances, fire engines, and all specialty equipment that we need to get our job done. We handle fire, medical, hazardous materials, responses for the village, and along with a bunch of other non-emergent cases that come up that we, that we get tasked with. So the mayor is correct, it's that time of year, furnace inspections, chimney sweeps, the time change is coming, which means change your clocks, change your batteries, and we'll have a lot of this information up on the website over the coming weeks, so everyone knows where to go to find the information that we're talking about. I'll be here with the rest of my fellow staff members all day, so any questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much, chief. Next person I'll introduce is our public works director, Darrell Michael. With when the time coming, I'm quite sure everybody's wondering about when's my meeting going to get plowed, so here's Mr. Michael, our public works director.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of trustees, residents, all elected officials. First of all, I want to start off by saying, given out of God, because without Him, you know, nothingness could be possible. I've been a employee for the village of University Park for 15 years. I am a former, former resident of 23 years, so I come in from the ground up. My main concern is the residents. Thank God for the passing of the baton from Mayor Covington to Mayor Ruiz, and I believe he's doing a fine job with, with the baton. And you got, it's a lot more good to come. I, I know some things that I can't speak on, but he has a lot of good things coming. Also, our new village manager, Ms. Beck Fulcom, a plethora of experience, and I plan on tapping in on every bit of it, every bit of it. I'm a wringer, but, but us at the Department of Public Works, we strive on making this community look better. With the assistance of my, my secretary, she takes the calls, Ms. Emily Robinson, she takes all our calls, and if there's anything that we can do to make this community better, anybody that knows me, know, I'm going to do what it takes. And, and with that, because the mayor will say I'm long-winded, so I'm going to go ahead and sit down, but I would like to thank each and every one of you for coming out. This, this shows me the hungry ones, the ones that want to see some things happen, and I thank you all, and thank you, Mayor Joseph E. Ruiz III.
Thank you, Darrell. Unfortunately, our information technology guy just had a minor procedure, Mr. Bulco will not be able to be here today. So the next person I'll bring up is our communications director, which is Nita Jenkins.
Hi, everyone. I'm normally not in front of the camera, and I prefer it that way, but my name is Nita Jenkins, and I handle our cable television station, our website, our social media, and our YouTube and our Facebook, and so what I'm responsible for is basically getting information to everyone. So that means working with the school district, getting that information with Parks and Recreation, police and fire. So basically, I'm responsible for taking the information and getting it out to you guys in the community engagement and our social media. I just don't push our information out, but I bring information from other surrounding towns so that we can be a great Southland. So, so the school district, Robin Kelly, Anthony DeLuca's office, any of those things that would give information to our residents that they don't get to see on a daily basis, I also bring that information into our social media. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins. Our next person is from the finance department, and I know everybody's concerned about municipal money and our taxpayers' dollars, and I'd like to present it up, it's Giselia Kelly.
Good morning, good morning, everyone. For you guys, you guys that don't know who I am, I am Giselia Kelly. Of course, the honorable clerk just settled to the deputy clerk as well, but I also am a key staff in the finance department and also village clerk. And I wanted to just introduce myself and let you guys know about the village hall hours, Monday through Friday, 5:00 a.m., 5:00 a.m., 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. See, I'm a little nervous. Village Hall is considered the central hub of the village. We support all departments. The finance department processes all accounts payable, payroll, accounts receivable. Finance assists the village manager with the yearly budgetary process, also with the yearly audits. We offer centralized services to our residents. You can come to village hall, purchase vehicle stickers, lawn bags, lawn stickers, pets, pet tags, applications for permits, applications for building permits. We also offer rental applications, applications for corner sale, solicitoring license applications, business license applications, and we also process transfer statements. business license application, and we also process transfer stamps. If you need to register to vote, come by the Village Hall, we'll register you. We also intake boyage, and we have many other services. So feel free to stop by, and we'll be delighted to help you. Thank you so much. If there is any other questions, I am open.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kelly. You know, a lot of the times, these people never get to see the public, so this is an opportunity for the public to see who they are, what they actually do. Our next person is our social services person, Mrs. Kitty Lewis Children. Most people don't worry, for those who don't, she will speak a lot for herself. Come on, Mrs. Children.
I got me some new glasses, 'cause Miss E, when she first started, every outfit, she has glasses to match. So I'm modeling Miss E. Well, I would personally like to thank my teenagers first and foremost, because it's never been a time that I have not picked up the phone and they have not came through. So thank you, guys, the ones in the outside and the corners in the hallway, because young people are not, they're seen but not heard. And one of the things I like to do is advocate on their behalf and to make sure that people know that they are part of this community as well. Couple of things that I do, I have been in the village for over thirty years. My adult children grew up here through all the athletic programs, 201U. Find young people, 'cause this community helped raise them, so I appreciate that. Couple of things that are going on, we do youth basketball, we did the back-to-school, we're getting ready to start up a youth family night. The volunteers are in my front row. We also do Girls Make a History, I do voters registration, casino. I developed a community resource directory, 'cause when residents come in the village and when they're new, they don't know our numbers from your numbers, from where to get a lot of things. So that was the reason why we were able to develop that. We're also getting ready to start a new committee, a census committee, because 2020, we wanna make sure the dollars that are coming through, we are part of those dollars. Couple of exciting things that'll be happening for 2020, we were rewarded another Kaboom Grant. That Kaboom Grant will be for Palmer Park. So you will be getting information in upcoming months about the build-out. Last but not least, if anybody's not familiar, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, Ninety Town Center is considered as our shop of all shops. We have La Heat, we have Cafe Charities of Jaliad, Northern Food Bank assists with our food stamp program. And now, starting on this Tuesday, Old Street Health will be there to assist our senior citizens. So again, mayor, as well as the board of trustees, the village clerk, and the manager, thank you for allowing me to be able to bring those resources to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Children. Our next two are mighty important, too, the cleanliness and where the village looks in our code. So I'll bring up Wayne Van Oersdale and Rawl Bell Gray from our code enforcement department.
Good morning. As the mayor stated, I'm Wayne Van Oersdale, and this is Rawl Bell Gray. I'm the administrative assistant for code enforcement and also fire, and I also deal with questions in regard to economic development, variances and things like that. Rawl is the person who is outside in the community, taking care of inspections, dealing with things in the industrial park, the person that you see driving around in the truck.
Good morning, everybody. This is the day the Lord has made, just for all of us. I wanna say thanks to mayor, trustees, village manager, clerk, Mrs. DeLuca. My job here is, on a day-to-day basis, is to do all the inspections within the village and the first park. At times, I would get help from the fire department, who would help me with some of the inspections. But generally, I'm the one who is doing all the inspections, all the complaints. And it's just the, not the easiest job at times. But I'm here, we're surviving, and I wanna say thanks to any of the residents. If you have any complaints, feel free to call seven oh eight, two three five, four eight one eight.
They gonna call that number too.
Please, I've always said, call. It doesn't matter who you are, if you've got a question, I'll answer it. If I'm not able to answer it, I'll tell you, it's not possible that I can answer it.
Can you repeat the number, please?
Seven oh eight, two three five, four eight one eight.
Thank you very much. I've got a couple more people I'd like to introduce, but I'd like to bring up Mrs. Claudia Waya. Mrs. Claudia Waya is our village connector and also the executive director, executive liaison for the mayor and the board of trustees.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you again for coming. I'm too a longtime resident, been here over thirty-five years, and when I think about it, it scares me. But I am the village collector, so I balance the books on a daily basis. I'm responsible for collections that come in. I do your village stickers, your transfer stamps when you wanna buy or sell property. I do also the business licenses for all our businesses to make sure they're licensed in the village and they have the proper insurance that you're supposed to have. Also, the contractor's license, which is very important for our citizens because we wanna make sure that we have quality people working within our community, working for our residents. So we make sure that they have all the notifications they're supposed to have. And most recently, the mayor has added me to his staff. Thank you, mayor. So I serve at the leisure of the mayor and the board of trustees. I try to make sure that everything that they want and that they need is possible to get all the information out to the citizens or to our community communications director. So, and that's about it. Also, I wanted to let you know that we are asking for our residents to help the village. If you could serve on our, any of our community, sorry, committee and commission, we have applications outside. It's usually one day out the month, you know? Also, we want people to help with our census. So we have Sharon McGuire over here. She's going to lead our census along with the mayor and the village manager. So if we can get people, we have a form out there. And if you could pick a committee or a commission that you would like to serve on, one day a month, usually it's like two or three hours, maybe two hours, I'm sorry, that you would come and you can help your community. Everybody wants to know what the community can do for them. Let's help all together and what you can do for your community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Way. Now I'd like to bring up our special, two special guests real quick, and we'll move on with the program. But this is our new superintendent of 201U, her name is Kara Coglenice, and she's gonna come up for a minute to talk about 201U, the school district, and University Park.
Thank you, mayor. It is a real pleasure to be here today. I feel thrilled to share with you what is going on in the U. If some of you remember, probably about this time last year, I was out in the community sharing with you some of the changes that were being proposed, facility plans in particular. And our school board had asked me to go out and share what we were working on and so forth. As I went out to the communities, we heard from you, your thoughts, your feelings about what was taking place. And when I brought all this information back to our school board at the time, they heard. They heard from you. Your voices were heard. In fact, all four communities' voices were heard. So as the board was getting ready to make any final decisions, what they did is they said, "We need to stop. We need to stop because the plan that we are proposing right now is not fully embraced by all our communities." And I feel privileged to work for a board that is willing to listen to all of their communities to make sure that everybody's voice is heard and everyone can embrace the plans that are gonna affect us, because we are called the U for a reason. It means unity. It's not one district, not one community, not two, it's all four. And so what I'm going to share with you today is I'm gonna share with you the strategic plan that came out of this, and more importantly, where we're going today. So, go with me, Nita. Thank you for being my technology person. So, moving forward in our district, it's not about a building, right? We can have old buildings and still have good curriculum, good teachers. But what we have to start focusing on is the future of our students. You know as well as I do, things are changing out there. It's not what we had when we were growing up. Things look different. Technology looks different. Jobs look different. The things that our children are being exposed to look different. Think about the technology. If you know anybody at your house, your phone's in, cell phone's on, right? I have, I have five children. They all have the electronics in all the time. I understand. So our world is looking quite different. More importantly, as a parent, as a grandparent, as an aunt and an uncle, what is our main priority for our students? Number one, make sure that they can go out there and get a sustainable job to take care of their families, their homes, and be a productive citizen. That's the bottom line. That's what we all want. So how are we gonna do that? And that is why this future-ready focus is not just about the building that we put our children in, it's about all of it. And those are some of the things that I was proposing last year. We talked about STEAM labs, financial literacy. We talked more importantly about other things such as equity and cultural competency. Our children, the value of living in a diverse community is about understanding other cultures, diversity, embracing people that are different than us, because I'm telling you, when they go out and function in the real world, they are gonna be working with students or other employees from other countries, other states. And they have to understand how to check their biases, their explicit and implicit biases. They have to think about their own cultural identity as we're interacting. So as we're talking about future-ready, this is what this is all about. It's making sure our buildings are functional and our students can learn without sweating and being thirsty, but also, it's about all of these other things. It's all of it. So I'm gonna talk with you today about this future plan that we're gonna be moving forward with, and then where we're gonna end up with our facilities. All right, so as I told you before, as I was out there last fall, board said, "Stop, pause on everything, we need to regroup." Board said, "You know what? Before we leave for, we need to have a strategic plan." Our strategic plan was tired, it had expired, and so we need to get a fresh look at it, and more importantly, we needed to reflect today's climate. So what we started doing is we went out and collected feedback from all of our stakeholders. We had focus groups, we heard from students. We had all these kinds of things to find out what needed to take place, and we came up with a four-year strategic plan. Now, this is a, I hope you can see the picture. These are just some of the faces, some of them are here today, that took place in our strategic plan. I want you to look at the picture, 'cause I want you to see if you can find people you know in here. Mr. DeLuca is behind him. Yes, he was. Our very own Brenda Mitchell, before she became my board member, was part of this plan. And these are just some of the faces, but we had over seventy people from all the communities taking place in the plan. Everybody had a voice. And so this picture, we felt very proud to take this picture. And look at the smiles on their faces. Those were genuine smiles. People felt accomplished for what we did. And I will tell you what, when we had the strategic plan, we had people sitting at the table with one another, and after one of the committee meetings, I had a person take me out in the hallway in tears, saying to me, "This is incredible. We've never been able to sit across from people at the table and share our views, and we were heard." So, you know, I always get goosebumps when I tell that story, because this was the beginning of us beginning to listen to one another and really making sure that we can make a difference. All right, next slide. So we've come up with a new mission. It's not a long one, because we wanted people to remember it, because oftentimes, people can't even remember the mission statement, so this is really simple. Empower each student to positively impact the world for a bright new future. That's all it is. Okay, next. It's got a couple of slides something. There it is. These are our vision statements. So the mission would go in the middle, but the vision statements are the things that we're hoping to accomplish. I'm not gonna go through and read all of them, but at the top, self-directed, self-determined, lifelong learner, critical, creative, thinker, respectful, all these kinds of things. Ethical, prepared for life success. It's okay, just a couple of slides. There it is. Now, this is probably the key piece that is different from this strategic plan that is different from the one that was before. See the word equity? Really big print. We need to take a look at the equity. As I came into the district, I heard everybody's stories. I heard four villages, four representatives, everybody sharing their stories with me. And it became very apparent, as I continued to learn about the history of this community, there was racial tension out there. There was feelings of hurt. There was feelings of sadness and marginalization. And so this needed to be confronted, not only as a school district, but as the four communities, 'cause we are actually all this together. We're not four separate side load communities. We're here to middle school, all of our kids go here. We go to other high school, all of our kids go there. So we needed to take this on. So what we started to do is we put together an equity audit. I had an organization come in, and we ran focus groups. And they were homogenous focus groups. So what does that mean? Those that were African-Americans were only in the focus group. Those that were Caucasian were only in the group. Our Hispanic folks were only in the group. And they were talking with the same race, same ethnicity facilitators, so they could be real. And out of that came some really real data that we took a look at. And what it did is it exposed a lot of these feelings, and we took a look at them and said, "We are gonna take this on." And so all those pieces were now embedded into the strategic plan. So I'll show you what those look like. From that, we came up with six goal areas. And I'm gonna highlight some of the key words. Those are the ones that actually came out of the equity audit. So goal one, that's about our student achievement piece. We all know our students need to achieve, right? But at what capacity? So we're here to provide a challenging, and here's the word, equitable. You hear that word all the time now. We are living in that. Equitable education for all students to promote a pathway for life success. Doesn't mean to go to college, does it? It means pathway to life success, because college is not for everybody. We have so many things that we could be offering our students. There's trades out there. We started a manufacturing program, highly successful. JROTC, highly successful. We're looking at some other options out there, perhaps culinary at some point, at some point, yes. And the other one is, we have an airport in our area. You know, why are we looking at pilots? There's a shortage out there. Look at our emergency responders, fire, police. We need all those jobs. So we're talking about those kinds of things, but we're doing it in an equitable way. All right, goal two, nurture a safe, oh, got it. Sorry. Nurture a safe, respectful, and what? Inclusive. That's what came out. Learning environment to instill learner confidence and growth and success. Inclusive. So what does that mean? We are making sure that all of our students here have access to AP classes in high school. And they have done a marvelous job making sure there's access so that all children can achieve at a much higher level, and making sure that there's nobody being kept on the outside. We're putting everybody inside. Number three, cultivate a high-quality, diverse staff, which will foster, and again, inclusive work. Environment, innovation, collaboration, high expectations, and accountability, a lot of words up there. Highlight I wanna put on here is diverse staff. We all know our demographics in our school district. We service many African-American students. We wanna make sure that our teaching staff, our administrative staff reflects that. We understand that. So we are looking at changing our hiring practices. So we are looking at changing our hiring practices. We are looking to go out and recruit and bring in more diverse staff. Number, uh, that's three, four, thank you. Create sustainable partnership with family, community stakeholders to build a unified network support for our students. Unified. That is part of what we're doing. We are really going out to all of our communities. We're making partnerships with our village mayors, all four of them. We're reaching out. This is really important. And I talked with some of our trustees today. This is about economics too, by the way. It's not just about the schools. We are connected economically to one another. If you think about it, we need more students. You need people filling your houses, your businesses. And there is a teacher shortage. And when we did a study with our own teachers and we tried to recruit, I hate to say it, they said they did not choose to live or come to work in our community, especially the young ones coming out of college at 22, 23. Because what? There's no nightlife, there's no restaurants. You know it. So we've got to think about that. And they can't afford the houses. Either they have to get a big house, there's nothing in between. So I've got a teacher shortage problem. I can't even recruit anyone to come here. So I've got an economical problem that I've got to focus on. So I've been working with Park Forest as well, as well as our mayor here, to start thinking about, out of the box thinking, we have to prepare an economy here that is welcoming before I go out there and start recruiting. So we're on that. Okay, next one. Five, provide students with an equitable, safe, and well-maintained facilities. This is where the facility plans is going to come in here. And notice the word equitable. We do not want to have some of our schools have and have not. And right now, and you know this as well as I do, if you have children coming through here, it's really hot in some of those schools. I don't care what you say, you cannot learn when you're sweating and you're thinking about, you've got to go get something to drink. It's hot, we've got to take care of this. Some of our schools have it, some do not. And we need to make sure we got air conditioning, good water in all of our schools. So we're focusing on that. And of course, bottom line is, well, how much is this going to cost? We've got to make sure that we're paying attention to the taxpayer, making sure that we're adding things on, but not going over the threshold where people are saying, "Ah, too much." We've got to find that sweet spot. How much can we renovate and build without putting too much of a burden on our taxpayers? I'm telling you, that's a tall order. That's a tall order. So where do we go from here? We've got the plan. Now, how do we start putting this to action? Oh, here's our little guy. This is our little two-siders. We talked about future-ready, we've talked about putting in STEAM labs already. We have kindergarten starting coding, by the way. We started that. Equity for all, cultural competency, technology, financial literacy. Our kids need to know how to save for their future. There may not be social security. You know, we've got to make sure they're protected. Even teachers, tier-three teachers, there is no more guaranteed TRS later on in the other day. So we've got to start figuring this out. Critical thinking and global and local connections. I'm a huge proponent on making sure that we're reaching out, not only just to our immediate community, we're reaching out globally. Our kids have to have connections with other parts of the world because they're going to be working in them. So those are our things that we're working on in addition to the facilities. Okay, so next one. How can you help on where we're at? We have started to try to put two committees together. We have a facility committee and a finance committee. And go to the next slide. We've already started these. These are your representatives for this community. And what we did is we put together equal, same amount of representatives at the table to have one voice. So our facilities committee is Ernestine. We can't wait to have her. Yes, we're very glad to have her on board. She's going to be a vocal voice in making sure that we're thinking economics, we're thinking grants. I already was hearing some of the good things she was thinking of. And we have our Ms. Jenkins here. So we're happy to have her. Our finance committee, we have Reverend Marcel Fierce. He's representing it. And we have, of course, our watchful eye of Ms. Brenda Mitchell in the background with our board, making sure that we're doing this. So this is your community folks that are here at the table representing. Now, we're in a time of hope. And let me tell you, the board heard your voices last time. The plan will not look exactly like it did last time. We understand the value of CSK, the ID program. They heard that. So we're in committee, so hang with me. There's promise out there. And we are going to be reworking on a plan that will be represented from this committee. And they're going to recommend that plan to the board. The board is not coming up with a plan. It's this committee. So that's the difference here. The finance committee is also representing the community. How much can the taxpayers take on? They're going to tell us what they can take on. So different landscape right now, right, from last year? And this is in a really good place. I can tell you, the board that I serve right now, I cannot be more proud to work for. They've participated in three equity and diversity training modules. They are working together. Watch our videotapes. If you have nothing to do some night, watch our videotapes. They are a very dedicated group that's working together. And we are thrilled to have Ms. Brenda Mitchell join the team. She has immense experience and a good voice at the table as well. And by the way, let me go ahead and introduce her. Come on up. We have two members to talk to.
Thank you. Thank you so much for my first presentation here. I am, for those of you that don't know me, I am Brenda Mitchell. And I have just been appointed to the school board and interviewing with some very, also worthy candidates to sit at the table. One of the reasons that I decided to accept the appointment was because I do understand that we are at a very critical point in the development of this district and what it's going to look like in the future for our children. I was asked would I report out to this board, of which I was a former member of. And I can tell you that I would be reporting out to this board and more because I am actively engaged in the process. And anybody that knows me know I don't do anything half-way. I give it my all. And I've visited every school thus far. And I think I've only been up here two weeks. And I've looked at all of the facilities and talked to the principals. My next is to speak to all of the department heads to see what they're asking from me and how I can represent them. I know this community. I'm engaged in it and I'm an integral part of it and have been for since the seventies as well. And Dean was kind of my mentor and a person that I patterned myself behind. I raised a lot of children in this community. I'm still raising children in this community. And so I'm not removed from it. But I think that the school district is at a very critical point. And University Park has to be represented. And I'm part of that representation. But the board, this new board, and it's basically a new board, is very engaged and very open-minded towards progress. And what we all can do together as individual representation of our community and understanding the bigger picture is that we're also part of the district that is unified and should look that way. Thank you for allowing me to be your rep. I've been here several times. And I welcome any communication to you as well.
And if I speak very well, so. Anyway, looking forward to working with you and sharing our plan. It's coming. There's hope out there. So rest assured, we're going to be doing this together. Thank you, Niva.
Thank you very much. And you're appointed school district member, Mrs. Mitchell. All right, let's move on because I know we've got to get to the point where the residents get to ask those questions. That's what we're here for. We'll get there very shortly. So all of us are here today to serve you, the residents. Let me tell you a little bit of how your government runs. We have a managerial form of government, which means our village manager is charged with running the day-to-day operations. The village board is a legislative body that provides direction on expenditures of village funds, provides direction by setting policy and passing ordinance, among other duties. The village clerk is the record keeper for all official meetings of the mayor and the board of trustees and prepares the official minutes of the meeting. She has many other duties required by the state of Illinois and includes serving as the Freedom of Information Officer for the village. To all of us, she is Dean and the glue that holds our community together. We hope that all of you have received the newsletter this week to give you a brief overview of what we have been doing on behalf of the residents. Since mid-June, most of us have been consumed with the Aqua crisis. We've asked Aqua to host the two informational sessions so we can use today's event to focus on all the other businesses the village is involved with. Things such as economic development, adding more police officers on the street, increasing diversity in our fire department, the rollout of the new cannabis law, gaming, expansion of liquor licenses, street resurfacing, new green initiatives as far as smart cities technology, demolishing Cityscape and getting an inventory of boarded-up properties, working to save Coretta Scott Magnet School, work on more youth activities for our young people, fighting to save the grant for Pine Lake. Thank you, Mrs. Shirley. Applied for a 501(c)(3) status for the village of University Park. Repairing and reopening Hickcock Aquatic Center and investing with restoring Reba Farm. So let's talk a little bit about economic development. Our village is fortunate to have its share. However, we are looking for more. We have land available, including undeveloped properties in the village. We have industrial space in our governor's Gateway Industrial Park, which has roughly 75 companies. But there is always room for more. We have retail space in our town center, including a 35,000-square foot available immediately. The village manager has directed the staff to begin a full cleanup effort around the property to make it more attractive to potential investors. And some of you may not know this, but University Park is home to many high-tech firms, including Bemba, Applied Systems, and Federal Signal. We want to continue to attract large companies into our community to bring in tax revenue and of course, employment opportunities. The village is also working with our neighboring communities and particularly our neighbor to the south, Moni. Together in recent years, University Park and Moni have quickly emerged as a national mega cluster for logistics, distribution, and e-commerce. Thanks to the proximity to several interstate highways and national railroads, University Park is connected by trucks and trains to both oceans, Canada and the Gulf of Mexico. The Interstate 57 logistics corridor is booming and is considered one of the state's untold success stories. I'm sure all of you have witnessed for yourselves the giant new distribution and fulfillment centers that have popped up in recent years. Big names such as Clorox, Georgia Pacific, Doc Foods, Avatar, and Amazon are ones you may recognize, just to name a few. And many more I-57 distribution centers are under roof or soon to be, including some being built on spec, occupying literally millions of square feet. These new outlets employ thousands of new workers, many of whom are integrated with state-of-the-art robots. And together, they are connected to commerce to people across the Midwest and beyond. I am excited to say this booming intermodal cluster is about to get even bigger. The new South Suburban Airport will complete a world-class transportation matrix that boasts some of our nation's most expansive infrastructure. boasts for trucks, trains, barges, and planes, which when completed, will give the Southland new unprecedented non-stop connectivity to almost any other marketplace on the planet. We will suddenly transform the Southland into a necessary global distribution hub. As you know, University Park has been a leading advocate for the South Suburban Airport for more than a decade. As a charter member of the Abraham Lincoln National Airport Commission, the village was a forceful voice and pushed the state and IDA to acquire land for the airport and to seek innovative financing for the project through a public-private partnership. The effort was championed by former Congressman Jesse Jackson Jr. and former University Park Mayor Al McCollum. A third airport is important to Illinois' economic future, but it's also the key to University Park's destiny. That's because University Park as a village will be a top frontline beneficiary of the airport. While we expect that most of its customers will be heading to Chicago or places north, that's okay. Because that means University Park will be the first village they drive through after arriving, and University Park will be the last village they drive through when departure. In other words, geographically speaking, University Park will be similarly situated to South Suburban Airport as Rosemont is to O'Hare. Now think about that for a minute. Talk about transformational development. Airports create more jobs than any other investment over time. And we are talking about jobs that run the gamut. Jobs run the gamut for all of us, from hospitality to corporate CEOs and everything in between. We need to continue to pressure the governor and state leaders to make this airport a reality. We deserve the same economic opportunities as the communities north of Chicago. As for other topics I mentioned, several of the department heads and village staff will be available to talk about these issues along with presenting new initiatives in the coming months. Well, it's supposed to introduce Ernestine, but Ernestine did her introduction already. We're going to leave while moving, okay? So now is the time to host the questions from the residents. And here it is. Does anybody have a list of the questions?
We wanted to do this so that everyone could hear the questions and everyone can hear the answers. We'll have a lot more opportunity to get to this. My name is Rosemaria Devene Beto. I've been helping with the village through your water crisis with Aqua. And the mayor asked me and the village manager to be here today to try to assist through the question and answer session. So the first question we have, "Cityscape was brought during an auction a few months ago. How can University Park tear it down if we don't own it?"
Rosemaria, there's a mic right there. Yep, it should be on.
On September 11th, there was an auction held by a company. And most of the boarded-up homes were sold at auction, including Cityscape. Now, the process is whereby it has to go before the board of Will County. They then have to make a decision that's based on the title, the new title that is going to be given. Once there is no contest against that, then they will move forward with that title, giving it to whoever bought it. Now, we are between this junction at this point in time. The village can then probably move to appeal in the best possible way that it is. But like my village manager said earlier on, leads need to be addressed with some of these problems. So going forward from here, we can then contact Will County and see how best we can deal with this scenario. As of now, that's the best answer I can give. It was bought at the auction. The deeds do not, they don't, I think it comes out at the end of November, early, first set of deeds. Late November, early December. I couldn't hear somebody.
No, and there is a process because the village can also work on imminent domain processes because it is a hazard and a liability to anyone that inherits that or lives in that area. So there are a variety of avenues that we're looking at to see if we can get that thing down.
Okay, the next question is, "What can we do to attract African-American teachers, not just out of college, but senior teachers who just like to teach?" So perhaps, thank you, Michael.
Actually, that's a million-dollar question. We are trying to create... We are trying to create a pipeline of students, even with our own programs, that are interested in going into the profession. We are working with Governor State right now, Governor's University, to start working at better programs, or with the state. So we are trying to find ways to create our own pipeline. What we've noticed, that many of the employees that work in our district actually live here, a lot of these are students that graduated from here, and so we're trying to create the pipeline that way.
Thank you.
The next set of questions are directed to the Finance Department. When can the IRH report be explained to the residents? I'm not sure what IRH is. Is there a resident who can identify with the question? We don't have the meme line.
IRH, you said?
IRH?
IRH. It's IRH report.
Okay, just a second here. The question is, when can the IRH report be explained to the residents?
Actually, since we have changed names, the village manager, we will discuss that and actually get back to you. I will keep our press on it, and we will have that answered at a later time.
Next question is, when are we going to hear about the budget? I think the village manager is in the budget process now.
First of all, some of you probably were not available at the time the report has been explained before, but they could receive copies of it. If you need it through a foyer or something, we can provide that. Just for you, your request to the village clerk, and you can get it. The other thing is, the budget is, has been a very difficult process in that, looking back at some of this, we want to make sure that this budget, that this mayor and trustees pass is an equitable budget, but by the same token, begin to gradually incorporate things that are necessary to fill some of the shortcomings with the delivery of services for the village. For example, we're looking at police, we're looking at police as it relates to employees, additional employees, we're also looking at them with regards to equipment, we're looking at the fire department regarding equipment, and looking at the differential as it relates to resignations and retirement. We're looking at the building department as it relates to the need, and not because we want to, but the need to address some of the code violations in the department, to hire an additional code enforcement officer. This town has a population, according to the nineteen, uh, two thousand and ten census, of seven thousand residents. And you know, NIPSY has done preliminary in terms of what the changes are, but with that, we got to begin to get at some of these issues. And one person, you may feel that one person can do it, and he may feel it too, but in reality, he can't do it all, so we need to get a person. So we're looking at this in a minute. The board will have the budget for a third reading, and they could review, they can ask questions and whatever the case may be, and we'll get it done. We can pass the budget to pass it. It's already late. We can pass it to pass it, but if we don't pass it with some sense of equity and need, what's the use of having a municipal budget? And that's what we're doing. Just bear with us a minute, and you're going to have it.
Ernestine, while I hand you, the next question is, are we really going to operate as a managerial form of government?
Obviously, people don't know me. The mayor and the board, oh, the mayor and the board, my boss, and I clearly understand that. And they put forth directors. As village manager, it's my responsibility to find ways, based on my professionalism, my concept, and some of my background, to do that, but within the corporate boundaries of the Illinois Reva State statute, in addition to the fact that this town is home rule, so there are certain provisions we can do that don't supersede that. But the, to after saying all of this, I am a strong manager. I'm a very strong manager. And I tell staff, I wouldn't expect you to do anything that I'm not doing. I'm a workaholic and I know it. And I see these people, and I say, these people, meaning the staff, are working hard, but some of them are a little misguided. And I'm looking at their job descriptions. It's either we're going to go by that job description, or we're going to do revise your job description to what you're doing. And I've already talked to some of them, and we're going to do that. And think about it, I listen to everybody. You know, in fact, they have helped me to really get me to see. But in this village manager's position, the people, the mayor, the board of trustees, and then there's me. And if they ask me, as long as it's legal, because I'm not going to jail for anything, as long as it's legal, I will do it and I'll work through it and I'll definitely fulfill all their requirements.
Questions for him. Representative, this question's for you. It says that Representative DeLuca mentioned something about receiving dollars for UP through a capital bill. Please explain.
Sure, you may be familiar with the capital construction bill that was passed by Springfield earlier this year. Well, there's, that was your question? Okay. Well, there's some allocation that I'm going to have some authority over. So when we go back in October, you know, ten days before session ended, before the May thirty-first adjournment, it was so crazy in Springfield, with ten days left, we weren't even sure we were going to have a capital construction bill. So it was rushed, it was thrown together, and surprisingly, some things were missed, but not surprisingly, some things were missed. So when we go back into veto session, we go back for two weeks, we're back at the end of October, and then the second week of November. The plan is, we're going to have an opportunity to make a reallocation and clean some things up that were handled very poorly in the spring. So yes, my intention is to get some money, no dollar amount right now, for the Village of University Park.
Our next question is from Albert Schott. Number one, the status of annual financial reports.
And again, the, we know that they're late. We know that they're late, but we're working on it, and we've talked about this several times. And we know that whatever, but we've been communicating with the state. We've been communicating, we've been telling them our problems, and they haven't sent out a whipping boy yet. But we're going to get it done. We know it's a priority. The clerk, deputy clerk, we know it's a priority. And believe me, you, we're working on it. October thirty-first is on our minds, that is right around the corner, and we're going to meet that deadline.
So that would also cover the gentleman's question about the status of the village audits, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then there's one more question. Does UP have access to motor fuel tax funds?
If I hear MFT again. First of all, there is a little issue with the STP project that's in the process of being developed. Obviously, there had been some indication, there has been some issues with, okay, there has been some issues, guys, with the motor fuel tax. Motor fuel tax had been somewhat a part of a committee, committed in a prior grant to assist with right-of-way development with a project we're trying to complete. I've communicated with the state Department of Transportation, and there seems to be a slight problem in terms of the amount of dollars available. But motor fuel tax is very specific on how you're to use it. And people just feel motor fuel tax dollars come from citizens' dollars through gas and all those kinds of things, and the legislation that's in order specifically address how it's being used. Now, I'm not going to criticize on anything, because I'm starting from here forward, and I'll just say that we have a few issues with motor fuel taxes, the motor fuel tax dollars that are here, but we, you can be assured that's what's left in the little pocket will be used to complete, and from that point on. So to answer a very specific question on the motor fuel tax, just say it's the intention of this administration to get it right.
Thank you. The next set of questions are for police, fire, and public works. Fire chief, funding for smoke detectors, how can we get some?
Great question. Funding for smoke alarms, we just came across a grant opportunity with, through State Farm Insurance about two days ago. I have a staff member working in contact with their public relations outfit. We're looking to have more information back on that very quickly. I cannot comment yet on how many smoke alarms we might have access to, but we're looking at that program and anything else that we can find. Once anything like that would be acquired and approved, of course, we would get that information out to the public as soon as we can.
I'm not sure if this is you or Chief Wilson, but trucking enforcement?
The police department currently does have enforced truck enforcement, not to the extent that we would like to because of manpower. However, there are tickets issued on a daily basis, and there are tickets issued for overweight as far as driving up and down the parkway, down drolly, and then also in the industrial park area. We issue tickets each morning for the truckers that spill over from Moni's truck stop and park on roads and so forth. So those are being issued on a daily basis as of right now, and currently we have three officers that are certified truck enforcement officers, but the tickets that we do have, that we are able to issue as far as going up and down the parkway, all of our officers are able to write.
Chief, did you want to just mention our new revenue stream with OXCAR, about our permitting system?
Yes, we do currently have, you can actually access it through the website, it has already put that on the website. Truckers, when they're coming through town and want to obtain a permit, then they fill out that OXCAR permit, and it comes and we will approve it after the fines have been paid and so forth.
Next question relates to prohibited parking between two AM and six AM. Please explain.
Okay, yes, that's also for the police department. Every street in the Village of University Park, there is no parking between the hours of two AM and six AM. And that was structured because of, when you have vehicles on both sides of the streets, the apparatus can't get through. So that's one of the reasons why that was originally there. The officers do enforce that. So if you do need an exemption, and not just for any reason, but for parties, or if you are having your driveway resurfaced, things of that nature, have a funeral, things of that nature, then you can call our dispatch center, and we will record your information and give you an exemption for the night. Other than that, there's no parking on any street.
The next question's to you as well. Snow removal enforcement and ticketing.
Okay, well, as far as the ticketing, how that usually works is when there's an excess of two inches of snowfall, automatically, there is no parking on any street in the Village of University Park. And that's so our public works department can go through and do the plowing. They usually come out the hours of the morning before any of us are up. So if they do have a vehicle that is parked there, or that is inoperable, or we can't find the owner, most of the time, on some occasions, we will attempt to notify the owner to have you move it if your registration is coming back locally. If not, then that's one where we're not going to put a ten-day sticker on it, we're going to tow it so that the public works department can go ahead and get our streets plowed.
Last question for you at this point is, thank you for addressing increased patrol for the safety of our community. However, what is the plan of action to remove problem areas of the community like Mike's store?
Okay, we are, I've gotten several calls, calls on that, as far as them actually hanging out in the parking lot and, you know, the amount. As of right now, I cannot inclusively say what is taking place. I can just tell you that we do move them along when we see them over there. Feel free to call if you see them gathering over there, besides going in to make a purchase or something like that, or speaking with somebody in the parking lot, but just hanging out in the parking lot, let us know, we'll send officers over and get them moved out. Yes, sir.
Is there a ticketing system in regards to trouble spots like that store that is handled by the police department for businesses?
Yes, we can, we do have, what we have under our administrative code, which is excessive use of our services. If we continue to get called back and forth over there for that same thing, when the business is refusing to move people along, then we can go ahead and ticket them or bring them into court, into our local court, you know, for compliance with that.
Okay, the next question, what are the plans to resurrect the community's swimming pool to provide a fun safe haven for families regarding the Hickok Aquatic Center?
As most of you all know, Revo Farm is one of our babies. I love it, and I've been really working hard with the mayor and trying to find funding, and the village manager, Ms. Ernestine, for Revo Farm. Thursday, they had a historic society meeting in Will County at seven o'clock PM, and they told us that Will, the state of Illinois will be putting money in to bring back these different historical land sites, to send money to different areas in Will County. So I will be working closely with the village manager, as well as Coach Tutu, to get us some of that funding. Also, we're doing a feasibility study to see where we can go with Hickok Pool and all of the rest of the rest of areas and our parking rep areas that need to be restored. And that is what we're at with Revo Farm. We want to make it a place where the children and the families can come together and gather and have just a good time. We can have an old-school, new-school baseball game, and that's my thing that's going to be next spring. So just work with us, we're working on it as hard as possible. We want to address our food shortage by having a also community garden there and different areas like that. Thank you.
And not to mention that the village will be applying for a park grant December the second, which will become eligible, which is open land and spacing, and we'll be able to carefully receive the grant and apply those monies to the Revo Farm and other areas of interest in our community.
Okay, the next question, there's a couple of questions regarding abandoned buildings, so I'm not sure who wants to handle that. Okay. The first question is, what are the plans to extinguish unsafe spaces such as abandoned buildings and unkept walking trails?
I can address the buildings, and I'll defer to, directed by the walking trails, as those are village facilities. With the abandoned property in the village, we have to understand that the village has limited funds right now. We're trying to get things together with funding. A lot of this property is either up for tax sale, which Rob spoke of earlier, there was a tax sale in Will County in September, and the majority of those properties were purchased. So once those deeds are addressed to the new owners, then we can address the new owners and them taking care of the issues with their property. Now, if there is an issue with a property, we attempt to have the property boarded, once we obtain information as to what's going on with the property. And then those are billed back to the owner, the boarding or whatever services the village provides.
Okay, this is similar, a similar question. Why have, why we have Maple Leaf added, why has Maple Leaf added all the new lights? What will happen to the vacant buildings?
Maple Leaf added all the new lights in the parking lot because we were receiving complaints from the tenants that the parking lots were not well-lit. So there was an issue when Aqua was doing fire hydrants that knocked out some of their lighting, and it has since been restored. The abandoned buildings at Maple Leaf, they are currently in the process of obtaining a permit. They have a company, they had to file an insurance claim because the roof fell too off. So that building is vacant for a while. So they are in the process of obtaining a permit, waiting for their contractors to get licensed. And once they obtain their licensing, they can obtain a permit to do work.
What is going on near the expressway, solar panels, building, being built, et cetera?
Okay, Rob can answer that one.
Thank you.
And we have 1.65 megawatts of power, which is going to be used at 450 Central. So it's solar panels, they go to the inverter, and then back to a transformer, and then to the building. So one is a step-up and one is a step-down transformer. But you, you're able to see it because it's large.
Thank you.
And it is solar for the use of lineage, along with some of it going back to the grid.
Okay, this next question, I think, is for Public Works. Will the driveway leading into and from Thorwood House be reconstructed?
At this time, that's a good question, very good question. At this time, me and the village manager, we are in the process of, as she says, she's a grant writing guru, we are in the process, we are in the process right now of, I know I got the crew going out this week to fill in the holes there, so it'll be a temporary repair. But we're hoping by next spring that we can have not just that, but several other areas resurfaced. So it's not that we don't see it, but it's a process that you have to go through to get to where the residents want us to be. So we are in that process right now.
Okay.
Oh, you have a question, ma'am?
Yeah, I have a question. Can I invite you to come to the 14th floor to look down to get an aerial view of that? That's why it's being suggested to be resurfaced.
Absolutely, absolutely. I have no problem with that.
Need to look down and see how it looks.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you.
Can we pass the microphone to Representative DeLuca? Representative DeLuca, what have you done to assist us in our water crisis? I had mentioned it earlier, but just in case you want to add anything else?
I think I touched on everything earlier, but maybe you were not here. But I had said when I spoke earlier that I wish I had a magic wand and we could have solved that problem. This was not as though there was a pipe in the ground and that pipe was creating a problem. Let's dig that pipe up, put a new pipe in, and the problem is solved. That's not what we were dealing with. So my office, and working with the mayor and the administration in University Park, working closely with Aqua, working closely with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, working closely with the U.S. EPA, that's what my office was doing, just making sure that we were aware of everything that was going on along the way, making sure and verifying that the process that Aqua was going forward with was a process and a procedure that the U.S. and the IDPA agreed with and concurred with. And we made sure of that along the way.
Thank you. Ernestine, these next set of questions are for you. Was the village manager vested?
Oh, my God. I am so happy somebody asked that. I have been working all my life. I've never been unemployed from the time I started working until today, never in my life. Even when I was pregnant, I worked through it until it was time to have the child. I worked all my life. I have never had anybody to vet me the way that I've been vetted. Now, I know, I've never had even a traffic ticket. I give more of my money to other people than I do myself. I've worked in social human services that way all my life. So I have nothing to hide in my life other than I am a private person. I could be ill, seriously ill, and go to work, and my own sisters, there are only three of us living now, my own sisters never know I'm sick. I'm a very private person. This is the first time in my life my life has been exposed the way it was. My resume used to be 17 pages. I reduced it to seven pages. These people that vested me went through everything. I have never in my life, they even went in my credit report. And it was good because I didn't want to pay for it anyway, but it was good. But the point is, am I vested? They could not find anything on me because I have nothing to hide. I have nothing to hide. I was shocked. They were talking to people that I didn't know. So to answer your question, was I vested? I'm going to use an adverb and say overly vested. But I appreciate it because I want to know all the rumors that I'm the auntie of Ms. Jacilio, that just cause I'm from Mississippi now. Y'all know how the black migration went in Mississippi? We went north. I came from Mississippi. And you know, when you were raised, y'all, mama just didn't whip you. She sent you in the backyard to get the switch off the tree, then you had to come back inside. That's the way it was. We came from a very strict family. So I was even afraid to get pregnant because, so I'm just telling all of you all this for you to know me. I have nothing to hide. And anything that's public information in this village, you can have, but realize now, it takes the village to raise a child, so I just can't do it. For you, there are other people, and you can't always monopolize. You have to give other people an opportunity. I mean, but I have nothing to hide, and they vested, so.
So the follow-up question to that, the follow-up question to that was, what other villages, towns, or cities have you managed? Is University Park the first?
Nope. Who knows?
Who are the village trustees skilled in grant writing?
Okay, well, everybody says they're skilled in grant writing. Everybody says that. But I am a vetted grant writer. I went to the University of Mexico, and I am a legally, educationally certified grant writer. And that's why in all the years I've written grants, all these years, I've only got one refused. All the years, I take pride in what I do. Grant writing is just not writing on the paper. You have to communicate with your grant sources, like being in a class. If you all got your bachelor's, master's, PhD, you have to spit out what they're asking you to do to get a grade for. And people don't understand that. They're going to be creative, be creative, but make sure you read.
You mentioned in your remarks that you were talking about trying to get more University Park residents employed. So can you please explain the hiring of any staff process for the Village University Park or other corporations if you might be able to help with?
Okay, I have a policy. It's great to do in-house. You may have the best person under your nose, but I believe in posting. I believe in posting. I was posting, you posted me. I believe in posting because I'm not saying anything. That gives everybody the opportunity. And if everybody has the same skill set, then we need to look at something that that person has that stands out from the crowd. But there are set of guidelines, yes, I will post, I will post, and I'll make sure that the appropriate people that has to interview sits on that board interview. And this town, I found out, has some skilled persons that interview you. They ask you everything except for color of your underwear. So it is great, and I'm not being sarcastic, I'm just being real with it.
One last follow-up, the mayor spoke about grants, for the grants we're looking forward to receiving, are there any improvements for the parks? Do they require any kind of matching funds?
Some of them do, some of them don't. And that's where people make the mistake, because it's a matching part. You have to be assured that your municipality has the percentage in their budget, because they're going to require that you submit the appropriate form to tell the source of the dollars, and you got to sign off. But what a lot of municipalities do, and they're still doing it, they lie to try to get it. And when it's time to come up with the 20%, everybody is scrambling trying to figure out where the money is going to come from. And you end up losing a grant because there's an amount of time of completion. And if it's not completed within this time, you have to continually go back and try to get extensions. But if they decide not to give you the extension, they come to the point and say, hey, we're taking this money, we're going to reallocate it in the pot, you have your choice. But anyway.
Okay, the next couple of questions are for Public Works. Good, good. Are the lawn service companies, do they need to be licensed, and are they allowed to work on Sundays?
That's more, that's more, yeah, cloudy way of question, that's the public.
Okay, well, hold on, then I'll let you answer these other ones. Can Public Works manicure the curbs to rid the weeds from growing in the concrete? And what can be done about the overgrown cracks? Creaks? Creaks? Sorry, creaks?
Yes, yes, we can. And yes, we are in the process of doing several things, not just to our parks, but also, also our buildings. The mayor and the village manager, they have a clear vision on what they want the village to look like. And some of those things, we are in the process of doing. So you got to understand, I've been, I've been employed with the village for 15 years. I've been a director here for five months. And I think that deserves a hand clap because this, this, they have finally decided to say, you know what, let's go from the inside. You know, let's get somebody that's been here that we cultivated, okay, if I may use the word. But there is, there are a lot of things that we are in the process of doing. But as you, if anybody has that road on a ship, you know, it takes time for that ship to make that turn. And if you, and if you start watching around the village, you will see that things are making that turn. Okay, so we are, we are in the process of doing all that. But you got to understand, you got to understand, we have a lot of other things to do too. But we are tackling each issue that we are able to attack at that time. So we are.
One last question for you then is, when is the road near the railroad crossing going to be repaired?
Well, well, the road near the railroad cross, let's get that perfectly clear, okay? Part of that is not ours. Part of that easement belongs to the railroad, okay? So the part of the easement that belongs to me, I believe is past whatever it needs to be, is past. So my thing is, I think when you're educated on certain things, as far as that, we need to, as residents, we need to contact those entities and let them know, look, we want our easement done. Because that's something I'm not going to do, because it doesn't fall under my jurisdiction. Okay, so I'm not going to touch anything that will put the village in any, any type of liability. Okay, so let's make sure we contact the correct and the right entities. And if you need, if any one of you needs numbers, contact my office, 534-4823. My secretary here will be glad to assist you and get and directing you into that path. Thank you.
Dean, could you answer these next couple of questions then? Does the lawn service need to be licensed, and are they allowed to work on Sundays?
There is not a requirement if you cut grass, if that's the type of work you do, to have a license. However, if you will be digging, that's a different issue and a different type of license that would be needed. As far as I know, there is no restriction on working on Sunday. I can think of no ordinance that would address. They do have a time period, you can, okay, I'm sorry. They do have a time restriction. You cannot begin at work before 6:00 a.m. But I know no restrictions for weekends.
Okay, one last question for you then would be, during our regular board meetings, when a resident asks a question, 90% of the time, the question is not answered. How can we rectify this?
I think we have in our policy statement on public comments that the board may or may not elect to answer at that meeting. But they have stated that a response would be given before the next board meeting. I can't say why, I can simply state what the policy is and hopefully procedurally moving forward. Since it has come up, it can be better addressed by addressing it to, the mayor would address it to specific individuals.
Yes, ma'am?
I think I might have asked that question. That I have noticed, and it's nothing with this administration, this has just been across the board. And I think that this is something that needs to be changed. If someone asks a question, most of the questions that I have heard have been relevant questions. And as I stated, 90% of the time, they're never answered, even the next board meeting is never. And so what's the purpose of asking a question if you don't expect an answer?
Now, it does not mean that the question is not answered before the next board meeting. Because if the answer is in writing, it is directed to the individual, the response is sent to the individual who asked the questions. That's why we ask for your name and contact information. I'm not saying it happens. I'm saying that the fact that it's not brought up at the next board meeting could possibly be that the question was answered to the requested. But moving forward, I will not debate, this is not a debatable process. But our policy that was adopted last year sets strict guidelines that it's up to this administration to see that it's adhered to. So we know what did not happen, but I'm hoping that moving forward, these were the things that will be addressed.
And I agree, we won't debate, but we won't debate, but because this is a town...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, we're trying to get this back, but we only have two minutes left. We started 10 minutes later.
Because this is a town hall meeting, and the board officials need to hear what is concerning us, her questions and statements are legitimate. So to bring it up and to talk about it now...
That's why we have so many more questions to get through, ma'am. I'm sorry, I want to be respectful to the people who've written questions. So we're, we are a few minutes late. The mayor's asked if these be the last few questions, but all three of these last cards have to do with Aqua. And the administration made a decision and pushed Aqua to have those two special meetings so we could have Aqua answer your questions directly. So if any of you wrote on your cards anything related to Aqua, please refer to the newsletter. There were two meetings that were scheduled that are open houses, informational sessions for you to go directly to the Aqua folks and get these questions answered. So the last question that was here had to do with, how often will you revisit the four-year strategic plan to evaluate and assess the progress? And that was for you, Dr. Carroll. So this is the last question. How often will you revisit the four-year strategic plan to evaluate and assess its progress?
The plan is, we are going to have a dashboard put on our website so you can see it in real time, all the progress, everything that we're doing. So that we're hoping to have up by December, not by what we're working on right now. When that four-year plan is done, there will be a timer that will show you what we've accomplished in that time. And then the hope is that in that four years, we will turn around and start to pass this over again.
Can I ask a question to you? You mentioned...
Can I ask a question to, um, when you mentioned about the safety, you were talking about the, the heat in the building, about the weather, but what about bullying and, and the fights and things that have been breaking out? What is being done to make sure our children are safe and go to a safe environment? People have committed suicide from the bullying and the internet and things, and it never gets addressed, and I'm very concerned about that.
We are as well. Safety, when we talk about it, isn't just the building safety, but it's the emotional safety. And we know that we are, we are working with that. We have a PBIS program that is in place. We are continuing to, um, monitor that and have strategies into that. Um, we are going to be reporting number of incidences so that you can see, um, how many that there are out there and how we're addressing those. So we do take that seriously. We are working on, we have an active program, and, um, you know, we are involved with that.
So I want to, I, I want to kinda piggyback on that, so it's something that I'm gonna for sure be pushing for, is along with PBIS, for multi-tier systems of supports for children. And we throw around the word equity, we wanna make sure that we truly provide equitable situations for our children, because a lot of school districts believe that equality is the way to run a school district, and I think that's what we've been doing in the past. But that only works if everybody comes to you on the same level. So we have a lot of students that are transitioning from Chicago to different areas, and our, the, the dynamics of our school district is very similar to Chicago at this point. So that means that we have to be strategic about implementing restorative justice and multi-tier systems of supports, and ensuring that we're able to identify the different levels, uh, and tiers of students that are in the building, so we can provide the supports and interventions for those students, and being proactive when it comes to bullying and gang and drug interventions and different things. So it's something that I'm, uh, for sure be pushing for, so that our students can be provided with true equitable, uh, cultures and climates in all the different schools in the school district.
I, I just wanna ask of you or, or Dr. K, do we be following, I'm sorry, I just wanna ask if you or Dr. K, would we be following SEL standards? Are you?
Oh, yes, we do.
Okay, so that should cover some of what we're talking about right now, we following those state standards, right?
We are actively following.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
In regards to SEL standards, I just wanna say that, um, you know, some of the curriculums, uh, that we, I'll be pushing to be put in place around, ensuring that, um, we are adhering to Senate Bill 100, and also making sure that, uh, we are doing, providing mindful practices in different social, emotional learning programs, starting in kindergarten, then, you know, moving up to the high school level.
Thank you.
All right, thank everybody. The last one, sir, yes, sir.
Uh, this came to our park, but, uh, you guys do a fantastic job picking up all the litter and stuff that people are throwing out. Is there something to be done, a camera to put up, so that we can catch the people that are coming through our doors dumping garbage and, I mean, we spend a lot of money, there's people out there picking up, I mean, twice a day. Everything. And it's, it's ridiculous.
And that, and that's something that we can seriously consider, because I'm sure all of us wanna have a clean village, and to have people ride through our community throwing paper and debris out is unacceptable. So that's something that we can all roundtable as a legislative body. Thank you. So in closing, I want to thank all of you for being here this morning and participating in this town hall meeting. My goal during my tenure is to plant several seeds for the growth and benefit of the community. Depending on how long I'm here, some seeds I will seek to fruition and some I may not. But the generation not yet born will inherit the benefits and visionary leadership of this administration and wonderful staff who are doing it. Our senior citizens may never live anywhere else, but they along with all of you deserve the best quality of life possible. I promise to work towards that every day, but I need your help. If you want to be a part of this effort, submit your name to serve on a committee or commission. Volunteer forms will be at the back of the room, so pick them up on your way out. And finally, on Veterans Day, we will be hosting an event to honor our veterans here in University Park, and I am one of those veterans. Mr. Childress, looking for information on this event and all other things going on in the village by visiting our website at www.university-park-il.com. Thank you for attending. Everyone have a great weekend.
Uh, again, thank you all for coming out. Just want to let the residents know, uh, the mayor and the village manager has allowed the village to have something new. 'Cause when you get residents to come in the village hall, the first thing they wanna know where everything is at. So when you walk in now, please make sure you get this bag. It has the information in it. And we are going to, uh, allow Reverend Brenda K. Mitchell to close out with a prayer. Thank you.
And Pastor Brenda, uh, K. Mitchell, I'll give you all the thanks, thank the mayor and the board trustees and staff for bringing us together. Get the whole hands. We feel uncoz and personal, because this is like, in University Park, is that right? Well, coz and we're personal. Amen. Let us pray. Father God, we come before you and throw our grace this morning. Thank you for what our eyes have seen and our ears have heard. Father, we ask that as you look upon this village, Father, we ask that what is made manifest is according to your word and according to your spirit. Father, we know that we have work to do, but Father, you have given us the will, and you have given us to do, to do that. Father, we ask that you would bless this board in a mighty way and make the vision clear, so that the residents will be able to understand and feel like an integral part of this community. Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for your word going forth from the beginning to the end. Father, you are God. We ask that you continue to bless us in a mighty way, individually and collectively. And know that we are only as good as our worst critic, and if we satisfy them, then we have done our jobs in this community. And Lord, we just ask that you continue to be with us as we continue to make your name manifest in this community. We give you the praise, we give you the honor, we give you the glory. In your son Jesus' name we pray. And thanks for all of these many blessings that are sent from heaven on high. Father, we ask that each and every heart, we join us in agreement by saying amen.
Amen.